Hey, Amy.
Yes.
I see you have a caffeinated beverage at hand.
Actually, you know, it's, this is, I love this, I don't think, I don't know if you can see it, San Pellegrino.
Oh, yes.
Momenti, it has a little bit of fruit juice in it for, for Dry January, it's a go-to.
I was worried when Maria said caffeinated that you were thinking we'd be here till 11 o'clock.
Oh, boy. You know, I do decaf. Yeah, which I know a lot of people say, what's the point, but.
Hey, like you said, hydration.
I can finish a cup of black coffee five minutes before I go to bed and.
Wow.
Maybe, maybe once a year I'll have a night I don't sleep, but it's usually after a planning board meeting and you're so wound up.
I'll bet your wife would say that you kick all night, though. My stepfather used to drink a cup of coffee every night at nine and my mother said, oh yeah, it doesn't keep him up, it keeps me up.
As long as I don't know the difference.
Hey, Maria, did you go to the Wettland's hearing yesterday?
I did. Jay was there also. There were, I don't know, over 100 people on the meeting, but not that many people spoke. I think the majority said that they were going to be submitting written comments, which I think is open till the 20 something, 22nd, 23rd.
Yeah, I just checked my voicemails at work, I forgot to do it earlier, and it looks like the Builders Association has hired three economists to review the, the, you know, the cost benefit analysis. So, just when I thought it was over with. It's that line from Godfather III, right? They pulled me right back in again.
There was one economist from Bryant at the hearing who spoke for the maximum allotted time.
PhD?
I don't know. Not sure.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Jamie, how are you?
Evening, Jamie.
Too bad.
Jamie, you having a bad hair day? We can't see you.
Yeah, it's because it said use my video and I forgot to hit the button. Is that better? Not a bad hair day. I don't know if I have a good hair day, but not a bad hair day.
Every day is a good hair day.
Rich, that's a lovely coat on that cat.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Jay, are we ready to go live?
Yep, you're also.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is a special regular session of the South Kingston Planning Board. The date is Thursday, January 7th, 2021. Time is 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call. In the absence of Pam, I'll take the roll call. Paul Jordan.
I'm here.
Susan Axarad.
Here.
Peter Di Stefano.
Here.
Pamela Rubenoff is absent. Joseph T. Murphy.
Here.
Maria Mack.
Here.
And Stephen Demossi is present. We also have Director of Planning, Jamie Rabbit, our engineer, Rich Vervelias, Principal Planner, Jay Parker, and Amy Goins, Special Counsel. So, Amy, before we open up the public hearing, did you have any comments?
Sure. This is Amy Goins', Legal Counsel. This afternoon, the applicant's attorney submitted a written request for a continuance of the public hearing to the planning board. I believe this is the first request from the applicant that we've seen. Typically, as you know, we, we grant the requests. It comes with a corresponding extension of the board's deadline for a decision. The applicant was provided a copy of the draft motion today, and the applicant intends to confer with staff as to some of the draft proposed conditions. I think that could be helpful. It's up to the board whether or not to grant the continuance. I just want to remind everyone, although I wasn't at the hearing last month due to a personal conflict, I am aware of what took place, and my understanding is that we kept the public hearing open really as a courtesy based on that notice issue with Clerk Base publishing the wrong day of the week on which the meeting took place. So, last month, I know there was substantial public comment as there had been in previous meetings. I would recommend that the board continue the public hearing to next month at the applicant's request.
Okay.
And Amy, is there a specific date for next month?
Well, that's a good question. Are we going to do a special meeting or would it be the next regular session?
I would assume if we're going to review the the conditions of approval, that could be a lengthy process. I'll leave it up to the other board members whether they would like to continue with a separate special meeting for this or whether they'd like to include it in our regular meeting next month. And before we even go, Jay, what's that next meeting look like, our regular meeting next month?
At the end of this month or?
Excuse me, January is, yes.
Yeah, at the end of January, right now, I believe there's only one item on that agenda.
So, it's a possibility we could put it on that one with, with the board members.
You're talking about in February, correct?
Well, Jay said there's only one item on the January, end of January's agenda right now, a regular meeting.
Given the number of meetings that we have this month, I think it would be wise to continue with the special meeting tradition that we have had with this project and find a date in, in February unless our February meeting is, does not have a lot of items.
Yeah.
On the agenda.
I would prefer probably a special meeting and that way too, if anything carries over, we'd still have the regular meeting at the end of February, because I assume our, the extension's going to run to approximately March 6th. I think the deadline was originally February 6th, so.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we did look at calendars this afternoon in anticipation of this discussion, and February 4th would be the first Thursday of the month. That would, that's be one month from this evening. And Jay, do we have any conflicts on the 4th?
Yeah, we do. There is currently a HDC meeting scheduled for the 4th, which I'm not sure if that meeting is being held. It's a recurring placeholder on our schedule, and there is a EDC meeting placeholder for that, that evening as well.
Again, we would be able to stop those meetings and.
I, and I know I'm not available on February the 4th.
Okay.
And we have a meeting already on February 3rd. So.
February 11th would be the next Thursday.
All right, then why don't, why don't I open it up and we'll let the applicant see what they have for dates in mind as well. So, okay, this is a continuation of the public hearing, conceptual master plan, major land development and comprehensive permit for the Mattoonik Beach Road condominiums. Do we have someone representing the applicant?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Planning Board Members, Michael Resnick on behalf of the applicant. Attorney Kelly was not available this evening, so I will be in his stead. Ms. Goins absolutely resuscitated the letter that we had sent today appropriately. I was before the Conservation Commission earlier this week. We had a very successful meeting, it was very productive, and as the boards are aware, a recommendation was provided, a fairly limited one at that. This morning, I did speak to Attorney Goins. I received the comprehensive draft motion that was put together, and we felt it appropriate to take some time to digest the many conditions that are in there and give Mr. Duhamel and the planning board staff an opportunity to discuss them before we come back before the board. We had suggested 30 days, of course, an extension to the board relative to the review of the application. And we would just ask that you consider that early February. Sounds fine to us, we can be flexible in that regard. The only thing I will add is I do have Mr. Duhamel here this evening, the applicant, Mr. De Simone is here. So, to the extent that the board would like to take public comment, we are available to do that. But obviously, that's the purview of the board.
Well, I think in the interest of time, this could save us time at our next meeting, but if the applicant is willing to hear public testimony, then I don't think anyone would have any objections to taking some public comment tonight. Amy, you in agreement with that?
Yeah, that, this is Amy. There's no issue with taking public comment, the applicant is here and they've consented to it. I would think next, I would think next month, if we don't close it tonight, then it would be really limited to people who haven't spoken at all previously, or, you know, if there's anything new introduced.
And if I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, obviously, we want to give everyone an opportunity to present, but we have had two nights and this would be a third night of public comment, and it would be, it would be our hope that we could conclude it if we did take public comment this evening.
I, I do think it's important to point out to everyone that the planning board did not receive the draft motion until yesterday. That is a very short timeframe in which to digest something of, of this magnitude. So, obviously, we need time to digest it and review and discuss as well.
All right, let me ask board members if they would like to take public comment tonight or they'd rather have time to review the draft motion and continue comments to next month. How the board members feel about that? What would you like to do?
I'm not sure. One question I have is that we, we did ask for some very specific changes to site plan regarding the placement of the roadway and I guess potentially the placement of the units on the lot. And in the package that I got today, that doesn't look like, I guess not even in today's package. I haven't seen anything changed yet there. Would we get that for the next meeting? Is that the plan?
I think that's what the applicant, why they wanted to do a continuation, so they can sit down with staff and go over some of those conditions to see what it would entail and how they would like to proceed. So, again, you know, as far as public comment, if they're looking at what was originally presented.
Right.
It's, it might not be relevant to what might actually come out in the final draft.
Exactly. If everyone's going to see something, if we're going to see something different and the public has a couple of days to see that prior to the next meeting, it definitely changes the landscape.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we just received the attachment, the draft motion today, so I would just echo Madam Voice Chair's comments that we haven't had the ability to digest it in the granular manner that we need to, so.
I completely understand. Like Maria said, we got it yesterday, most of us work, and so it didn't give us that much time, and again, staff has been working on this and, you know, some of these things just take time in the, in this COVID atmosphere that we're, environment that we're working in right now.
We certainly under, we understand that, Mr. Chairman, and please don't take my saying the timing is anything adverse to the staff, we appreciate getting it in advance. It's just a very comprehensive motion, so.
And I think also to that end, Mr. Resnick, if there will be any changes that will be made to the plan itself, as Paul pointed out, we need to see those preferably in a hard copy as well as digital copy so that we can draw on them and make notes and all of that kind of thing, so, you know.
Absolutely.
I understand that.
I'll work closely with Mr. Duhamel, and if, if, if something like that occurs, we'll get it to the board as soon as possible.
Okay. Well, again, hearing, yes, Peter?
I was just going to say, I mean, it sounds like if we're going to get different information, it may be best to wait to get all that different information and then, then we can talk about it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Susan, you're nodding your head, you're in agreement with that?
I agree.
As well as the public, I mean, how can they comment on what they're saying?
Yeah, they could be making a comment on something that's going to be completely different, and so, and Joe, you're okay with it? Okay, let me just see what we have out there. Nobody's got their hand raised. All right, then, if we're going to continue this to another meeting, can we, Amy, should we firm up the date of the extension as far as when our final date, it was, it was February 6th, so if we extend it 30 days, what, what is the actual date?
Let me, let me do my time and date calculator, but I do want to mention, we do, as you know, need to continue it to a date certain to avoid re-advertising. Also, I know you all know this, but I'm going to say it anyway for the public. Whether or not the public hearing is closed, open at any point, if new plans are submitted, the public will have an opportunity to comment.
All right.
So, is it, was it originally February 6th?
I believe it was February 6th.
The new deadline, 30 days from that would be Monday, March 8th, if you wanted to make that corresponding with the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting in March. The work session is March 9th.
Just, yeah, that might be. Mr. Resnick, would you be amenable to that?
I'm sorry, what date, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear.
Tuesday, March 9th.
That, that's fine for me, yes.
Okay.
I would be happy to make that motion then.
Okay, so Maria, you're making a motion to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Until February 11th, and will be, deadline will be extended to Tuesday, March 9th. So, we have a motion by Maria. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Paul, any discussion?
I just want to make it clear for the public, the motion has two dates. The next meeting at which this will be considered would be, that's Thursday, February 11th, and March 11th or March 9th, I'm sorry, would be the planning board's deadline to, to vote and make a decision on the project. So, the next meeting for purposes of public comment is Thursday, February 21st, February 11th, 2021.
Okay. All right, all right, we have a motion made and a motion seconded. I'll take a roll call vote. Paul Jordan.
Hi.
Susan Axarad.
Hi.
Peter Di Stefano.
Hi.
Joseph Murphy.
Aye.
Maria Mack.
Aye.
And Steve Demossi, aye. The motion passes unanimously. So, we'll, again, this will be continued to February 11th for the public hearing on the Mattoonik Beach condos.
Great. Thank, Mr. Chairman. Have a good evening, everyone stays safe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have any reports or special items for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one thing I want to share. I believe it was articulated to you and to the board today in an email, but while we have some members of the public on the call, might be prudent to share with them as well. Staff is changing the way that we provide links to the backup information for applications. Previously, we had included individual hyperlinks to all documents listed directly on the agenda. We have, starting the first of this year, we have switched over to creating webpages for each application. Those webpages will have a brief description of the project, a brief current status update as to what the project is, and at the bottom of the page, there's all of the documentation that has been submitted for each stage of the application. So, if I can, real quick, I'll share my screen and I'll walk you guys through. This is the Planning Department's webpage. On the left-hand side, there's Planning Applications link, and we intend to, obviously, once applications are completed, we'll be moved to previous. But here are all of the current applications that are pending before the planning board. We can use, we'll pick this application itself. There's a brief rundown of the description of the project, current status, the, the most relevant quick link information right here on the right-hand side, and then at the bottom, we'll break out the information that's been submitted at each stage of review. So, on the agendas going forward, you will no longer see a long list of links below the agenda item. The application, the name of the application within the agenda itself will be hyperlinked to its corresponding page on the website, and you can find all the material here.
And Jay, that would only show applications that have been certified complete?
Not necessarily, because some of the, we, we, we have to upload the information for TRC meetings. The majority of those applications aren't certified complete at the time of TRC.
Okay.
I'm going to make a good faith effort to get that, get them up as soon as they're received. There'll be a mention, there'll be a note in the status that it's scheduled review with the planning board as soon as the administrative office determines that the application is complete.
Hey, Jay, would you back up a page? So, that, that map, which is very handy, development project map, if, are the links going to be there as well? Because I think, okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
And that was another, we wanted to kind of stream so that we didn't have multiple files being stored in separate locations, so going to the development project, it hasn't been completed yet. I was working on it yesterday and encountered some issues with the backend of it, but the, the pop-up for the project will have a link to the webpage that'll direct everybody back to the.
That seems like, like the best resource for the public right there to see what's in there and then get everything they'd ever want to know about the project, so, good.
That was, that was talked about on the comp plan, I think, one of the goals, wasn't it, to do that?
Yes.
So, so, Jay, for clarification for the public so that they understand, is it possible to put something on the homepage of the website so that people know to look for this? Or something that says, go to government, then go to departments, then go to planning, then go to whatever that, the, the last link was?
Yeah, you, this is the, the Planning Department's homepage and you can access it from here. This, these pages are all individual pages as well. I'd have to get whether or not we want to put it on the homepage. Obviously, there's a lot of information competing to be on there, and there's a, there's a tendency of thinking sometimes you can put too much and it, the webpage becomes too overloaded with information. That's something I'll talk with IT about and see if there's a way that we can put a quick link or something.
What about the, the calendar where it would show what days we have meetings? Would there be a link from that calendar to this?
No. Well, under the agenda item, Jay, you still intend to link that agenda item to the project file.
Oh, good.
In this page, correct?
Okay.
So, like if you clicked on that special meeting?
Yep, like, so if I click on this one, I got to close this window. And this is not, this isn't a good one, let me go back.
Right now, if you go to agenda item, there's 11 things you need to click. Our intent is when you go to agenda item, you make one click and it brings you to the entire project.
Awesome.
But since it's a change in methodology, I thought even a temporary notice on the homepage so that people would know, but if it's right on it.
Maria?
Yeah.
Do a little news flash or news bulletin on our.
We, the Planning Department is not the gatekeeper of the entirety of. So, we, we'll have to get permission, we'll work with IT to figure out a good way of putting that information out there. News flash may, may work, but a, a quick link, a quick link down here somewhere maybe.
Yeah, and, and maybe we can have Rob mention this or Jamie, you mention it at, at the council meeting on Monday.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. And Jay, the, the links will not have documents that have been, well, some of the links have, for example, videos that have been submitted by community members. Will there be any kind of link to letters or, you know, anything that's been submitted to the board at a meeting or after the packet has gone out or that kind of thing?
That, that is something that, this, this, this whole thing is a work in progress. Those video links that you saw were previously uploaded, they happen to be in folder for that project, and the way that it's set up is all of the information that gets uploaded to that folder will show up there. We're in discussions with how we would handle public comment and information submitted by the public, maybe separating it out in a different, different line, so it's separate from the applicant, applicant's submittals. But again, we're open to suggestions. It's, it is a work in progress, but we have to start somewhere.
We're also evaluating how we handle information after the agenda goes out, Maria. We get something this morning, we may not have time to post it to the webpage, but we're going to send a blast email out to the board members that we just received this. It's our, you know, it's in addition to the packet you get. But if we're doing that remotely and we're doing that at 3:00, that may go out to you, but may not get posted to the following day to that project.
Well, every, everyone knows how much we, we love, I cite a previous example, getting a nine-page memo the day of the meeting.
Well, we've, like Jay has mentioned, that has been an issue the last few projects of whether it's the applicants or the butters, you know, submitting information at 3:00 on a, on a Tuesday.
10 o'clock.
Well, 10 o'clock, yeah.
Yeah.
And so.
This, yeah, this is Amy. I just want to mention, I had some recent experience over the past several months with private client matter in a, another large, in a large city, and I just want to make sure you all know what a fantastic job our planning staff has been doing, trying different ways and, and working hard every day to really, you know, make the process as transparent as possible, because believe me, that's not the reality in, in every city, you'd be shocked at, at, I don't know whether it's a matter of will or competence or what, but you just should all be aware and the public as well, and, and, you know, mistakes happen. We know that there's an issue with Clerk Base, apparently, formatting documents incorrectly, but the big message for the public also is please don't forget to pick up the phone and call, because Jay and Jamie and Brian and everyone in the office, they're, they're happy to walk people through things, whether you're, you know, and if you don't have access to all of these resources, technology, I don't think anyone's listening in on the phone, although I did see a call-in participant earlier. There's still that opportunity, despite the COVID restrictions, to come into town hall and review hard copies, so please get the word out to people. There's more than one way to obtain this information, but I, I do want to compliment the staff because they're doing a great job and it's, it's a silver lining of a sad situation that we've been forced to take a giant leap forward in transparency.
Yeah, I, as much as I dislike Zoom for the impersonalization of a meeting, the information that the staff has put on, on webpages now, it's amazing. So, it's, in the old, in the old days, we, the people would sit in the audience and we'd hand out leaflets or flyers, but if, you know, any late submissions, none of that information got forwarded. A lot of times I didn't have access to maps unless we put them up on the TVs, which weren't always easy to read, so it, we've, we've made a lot of improvements. it we've we've made a lot of improvements that they should be proud of.
Yeah, I also want to thank planning staff for trying to and and having accomplished a considerable amount in a relatively short period of time, when you think about everything we've all been through. And I think that having access to, having easy access to a greater amount of information allows for a better dialogue, both with the applicant, and I think it allows the public to have a more, a greater knowledge in terms of commenting at at the hearings.
Great. All right, any other?
Yes, I have one more question. Pete, did you receive the email, the agenda that I sent today?
Got it.
All right, there was an issue with too many hyperlinks on agendas, and they're getting tripped up in a firewall either on our end or the recipient's end, so I think this will also help to eliminate that problem.
Awesome, thank you.
And question for Amy. At some future meeting, will you be able to speak with the board about the most recent CHAB meeting result?
I was planning to do that on Tuesday night.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one additional item under Agenda Item D, Reports and Special Items. We did set packets and agendas for the work session and included the revisions to the cottage regs as well as the handout, which we're calling Bulletin Number One, which will be a series of bulletins associated with design standards. If anyone has any insight, comments, or anything, feel free to reach out to me prior to Tuesday. I'll try to address, make revisions to, or have information for you that evening. Versus, I would love to try and wrap that portion of that project up Tuesday night, if that's at all possible. Again, the ability for me to respond to you or staff to respond to you prior to Tuesday night or be more prepared for that. If you have a question, reach out to us, please. I know Peter and a few others have, but I'll, you know, again, that that goes to everybody as a board member.
Okay. And Jay, no problems on the the TRC at 1 o'clock? Were the applicants okay with that?
They were advised via email. There shouldn't be.
Okay, all right. Well, there's nothing further to discuss.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Second from Joe. All those in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Okay, we'll see you at our next meeting, which is next Tuesday.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Night.